Okay, I guess we can go ahead and get started. It's five after six.
Or he'll be done by four.
Well, I will call it six o'clock, July 17th, 2019. I'd like to welcome everybody here. And Paul Loewe-Sparz, glad to have you here. I've asked Chief Spencer to give us an opening prayer if he would.
Our father never worked consulting. Welcome, we have to be here tonight. To participate in helping people that are seeking to build our community. To counter any criticism, correct and make those decisions which will help progress and grow our community. We're totally thankful for the libraries we have and for that community we have to be here. This great country has all the certain armed forces of many people blessed and protected and vacuumed over. And we don't have no harm eyes upon them. So be with us and watch for us to save the communities. We'll be inclusive, constantly be proactive, and say things that we need to change.
Amen. Well, I'll ask Travis to speak if he would come up, then ladies, and the pledge.
The audience, please, Ryan. Repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the July 3rd, 2019 city council meeting. Number two, resolution, central Utah water agreement. Number three, resolution, amendment to the Payson City fee schedule. Do you have a motion?
I have a concern with the fee schedule.
Okay, go ahead.
I, it's our highest rate that we have. And I'd like to see some studies or some numbers before I come to a voting for that. I know it's only going to be like $2 a month, but I'd just like to see some numbers.
Any further discussion? So does, do, is there a motion to proceed with this, or?
You want to pull it off if you don't want to?
Yeah. What's your opinion?
It's just me, so I'm the only one, but we don't need to pull it off.
Cheryl, are you prepared to discuss a little bit with us?
So, on the fee schedule, what happened is when we brought it to you, I think it was in May, that we were increasing everything by the CPI, we increased it 2 percent. All of the other electrical rates got increased by the 2 percent, except that one, it got missed.
Oh, so this is just the CPI?
Yes, this is the CPI, and we're just trying to correct the fact that it got much lower. All the rest of it got increased by the 2 percent.
Okay, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, that was all we were doing, was just trying to correct what happened.
Okay, and I wouldn't necessarily have a problem either, I just wanted to know why and where, so that sounds sensible. Thank you.
With that, no information, do I have a motion?
I would make the motion that we approve the extended consent agenda.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Oh, is it a roll call? Doesn't show that here, but, okay. Roll call, starting with councilman. Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Okay, we'll, with that done, we'll go to see petitions, public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes or less if possible, and so we'll go to that point. Not seeing anyone that would like to come up, we'll go ahead and close the public forum and move on to staff reports.
I was about to, sometime this year. Just a report, I want to put this up, because the last couple of weeks in August, we've had sixty arrests, one hundred thirteen offenses, seventy-seven citations, one hundred twelve violations, seven hundred thirty-two hours of service, eight months' rights, one hundred nineteen traffic, so I've got nine accidents. They're not too pretty this month, so. Anyway, we just closed our opening for our office of Byron. It's actually about thirty applicants, so I haven't got a chance to look through them yet, but we're just working on that in the next couple of weeks. Something like that. Isn't it?
Yeah.
Used to be in the hundreds, but not anymore, that's a pretty good number, so.
Okay.
Mayor and council, the five hundred rest CPG project is beginning to contract and taking possession of the job. We have just about thirty days of completion. The resurfacing project that we did out, we're having a pre-construction meeting next week, and we'll see, or next week, and we'll see that sort of maybe there. Mostly, if I could be on, shall we, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? We'll keep it posted. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Hey, do we have any extra funds to do a little more smoothing on Main Street once it's done? Not just the trench, but, because right around the high school, it's really bad.
We'll just have to take a look, see if we can wrap it.
Okay. I, you know, I understand, but if we look at that.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Thank you.
Sound very well, bro.
Well, may I count out, this is another, you just, you just about the fee schedule, I'm sorry, I was over talking with Cheryl. We were trying to just fix the ones that were missed, but you brought up a good point. We, we have increased the CPI, increased for the last two years, but we have not been able to raise the rate of the rest. I don't think that was intended to be raised. And we raised all the others, but not the rest. We're trying to get that more in line with the other. So, I just realized that that, you know, Cheryl thought it was just a myth, but there was an end meeting, so. I would recommend, you have to go back and reconsider, but I'd recommend pulling that fee schedule off and not a lot of the time. And then we'll go back and make sure, I just want to make sure that the numbers are correct, what we, what we have. We have to pull it back to the grid. So, precision, wait, I would, I would motion reconsider, and then you have to get out of the, just, yeah. And then, a motion to amend the, whatever it was. Just amend your motion to approve everything except the fee schedule, bring that back to Cheryl.
Well, can we approve the first part of it?
The first part, yes, there's the second part.
Yeah. Amended with the exception to exclude the skip increase to the residential rate.
Yeah, yeah, so what you need to do is just make the motion to reconsider.
Good.
We'll consider a motion to re- revisit the consent agenda.
So, do we want to do it now, or after the reports?
However, sorry, I just got it up.
I can finish reports and then do it.
Do we have any reports, maybe that's the question we need to ask. Any other staff wanting to come up?
Nobody will now.
I think we can delay the council reports and take care of that.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to reconsider the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Well, either, the two that end, okay. Okay, we'll do roll call on that one as well, starting with councilwoman.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
So I would recommend approving the consent agenda with the exception of the residential rate fee schedule.
So, we'll go back and do that. So moved, okay, sec, there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, we'll start, same with you this side.
Aye.
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 Pardon for that, we'll go back and make sure, we'll check with Sarah as well, make sure that was, what was.
I remember talking about it.
Yeah, I think that was the case, but we'll, we'll make sure it's right, and then if there's a change we need to do, we'll bring it back.
Bring it back, okay. Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go any further, we're going to have staff, I mean, council reports. I'd like to excuse Ryan, councilman, you led, he's committed some training and didn't know whether he could get back here or not, but if he comes, that's the reason, just like. Okay, we'll go on to council reports, starting with councilman Christensen.
Oh, I have a list here. I just, it'd be nice if more of the public showed up, I'll be honest, but just so that it's on public record, we are, we are working on some different things to get our curb gutter and sidewalks moving forward. Looking at some grants and some special improvement districts and things like that, just so that the public is aware that it's not off of our minds, it's constantly a battle that we're working on. Wanted to say thanks to those that helped with the Scottish Festival. I thought that was a great, great thing, it was a good turnout. Looked like it was well under control when I was there, even though there were lots of weapons walking around. I'm sure that makes the police nervous, but they seem to do really well. Maybe that helps. If Kirk tells anybody doing something stupid when you see forty people packing eight-foot-long swords, right? The one thing that I did notice, I don't know how to address this or solve this problem, but the sidewalks inside that park are a little bit narrow. So either we need to require the booths to set up three feet back from the sidewalk to allow for people to line up to enter those booths, or we need to physically go out there and widen out those sidewalks. Because that, from the pavil, whatever they call it, the white building, pavilion? From the pavilion to the pavilion, there, there's a little tiny narrow one there, and some really popular booths, and it got really crowded in there. A lot of people tripping over each other, trying to work their way through that. Silver future, we need to accommodate that. Dogs in the park, I think are still a concern to me. And Doug and I had chatted a little bit, I had some ideas, I don't know if we can get an ordinance to amend that. Questioning whether or not we could allow them during certain circumstances. We'd even talked about maybe requiring a permit. They have an information desk there, seems like a little bit of an extra loop. You go in there, you pay five bucks, we give you a ribbon to tidy your bow, and a little packet of baggies. That would give us the option of limiting the number of dogs that come into there. We could set it, you know, we'll allow twenty-five permits or thirty permits, whatever it might be. Kind of give us a little bit of regulation. I know at the Scottish Festival in particular, people come from all over. They're coming in, they're out of Arizona, they've brought their animals with them, and they're kind of stuck. It's hot, you can't leave them in a car, what do you do? Just want to visit it, either in a work session right here in this and talk about that. Excited for the salmon supper, salmon supper coming up, was curious as to whether or not those tickets could be purchased other than online? Does anybody know? You can purchase it here?
You can't, but a person here.
Yeah, as I say, the advertisements that you can buy in here in the ops, the city building.
Okay, I had an aunt that was yelling at me for that, because she had to pay this big service fee to purchase them, and said she was going to buy them when she got to the gate. And I says, "Well, you may go hungry, you don't want to do that," so.
Twenty dollars? Twenty dollars is still pretty cheap for the mouth food.
It is, but they don't look at it that way, they look at sixteen dollars for the ticket and four dollars for a fee, and that's kind of where they're. So, anyway, excited for the pickleball courts, they're looking great, coming right up, that open house is there. I want to address the elephant in the room, that's our PI system. I brought water samples. I have, I have six of these, most of them look a lot like this one right here. So I sent Travis out, his due diligence, lay down right in the dirt and was fetching water for me in various different places, I have all these, if anybody wants to look at them. Our water's pretty clear now. This is right here, is sediment taken from the lower pond. That's, that's actually above the water line, so it has settled, the water has dropped down. This is still stuck to the sides of our ponds. This is where we're having our problems. This is still sucking down out of the bottom, that fine silt, that sediment is moving down through, filling our lines up. We, we are actively working on that, trying our very best to resolve that issue. We've actually even discussed trying to shut the system down, flush it out, drain the ponds, bring in some big heavy equipment, dredge the bottom of our ponds, and try to get them back online as quick as possible. Best numbers we're looking at, thirty-six to seventy-two hours. That's real optimistic. Make it to the end of seventy-two hours and have to turn water back in till with sediment in them. And I know that the public is gonna, gonna hate that. If we hit it on a Sunday, you lose a Saturday watering day, a Monday watering day, but we don't know where we're at. So we're still discussing it, still looking at it, trying to find a day that's not going to burn lawns up to miss a day of watering. But we'll, we'll do a press release on that and let people know when the time comes, what we're going to do there. But just so the public is aware, it's, we're not, yeah, just, just turn a blind eye to this, deal with it, it's the way that it goes. No, we understand the problem and we're trying our very best to resolve it. So, anyway, I think that was all I had today, mayor, I had all this stuff, thanks.
Today we had our Gladstand Ladies Golf Tournament, I think it's an all course. We had a full field, so eighty players, right, Tracy?
Eighty-four, yeah.
Eighty-four. It was wonderful, other than it was too hot, I'm still trying to recover. Although I won, but, anyway. It was plenty warm, but the course looked wonderful, everyone was happy. The Women's Association puts on a good tournament. Still had one point that didn't work, out of order. But it looked really nice. You didn't get a chance to go in ladies restroom, did you?
I did, yeah.
Did you? Good.
It looked nice, it reminded me of my grandma's restroom. In a good way.
Good, good, the ladies did a good job.
Yeah, they did.
Pretty good. Anyway, it was a great day, and people from Clareup and Ogden, even further north, and way down south, and they left Gladstand and had a great time. I also enjoyed the Scottish Festival. I'm amazed every year how much bigger it gets. I heard several times from several people that this is their favorite park to come to, simply because of the big trees. And they love Payson City Park for the Scottish festivals. They said places that they visit, other places that they hold the Scottish festival, they don't have the big trees like we do, and they love that. So we appreciate everybody that worked hard on that. I think that's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything.
Well, I think we should have had a picture of the mayor, right, with his kilt and cowboy boots on. That was a, that was a sight.
Yes, I do have something, I did wear a kilt, so.
With cowboy.
And there is a picture.
It was pretty impressive.
Yeah.
I agree, Scottish Festival, it's one of my personal favorite events, and I would love to see a little bit more involvement on the city side of things, but we brought in thousands of people. Probably need to reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, because I'm still amazed at how few of our local commercial entities fail to take advantage of all the people we're bringing in. I mean, it's a Scottish festival, they like to drink, and I didn't see the weed blowing in with anything up there, because we're not allowed in the park and for a short block and a half walk, they could be Scottish all they wanted to, you know?
I'm not, I have talked about Thai and Andrew on that.
That's, that's good, because we're bringing a lot of traffic and they're spending a lot of money. It'd be interesting to get a, I don't know how we could do it, because we don't have paid entrance, but can we get a, a report that shows the taxes that we earn from like the booths, is that possible?
If they're, they're a few months behind.
I'd just be kind of curious to know, I mean. We just get such a small percentage, it's not amazing, but it would be, give us kind of a feel of what we get and what it does for our community. I'd love to see that at some point in time. In addition to what councilman Christensen said, I, I think maybe we look at the watering schedule too, and we see if we can put, in regards to the fresh erosion, that maybe some people at the higher elevations or the end of the lines can water during the day. Because I know in my personal house and some of my neighbors, my sprinklers won't even pop out if I try to water during my hours. Some conversations I've had with citizens, that's exactly what I've told.
We told them to complain, go ahead and do that, but we were going to put a press release, and that's what.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, like, I think, I think we need to do, have a continual communication, because the one piece we put out was really good, and I shared that, and that's what we see, but we're dragging on. And I think just another one, even if it's the same one, just say, "Hey, we, we know, we're aware, we're working on it." These are, you know, something like that, so, so they know. I just talked to some residents down here, they don't know it's the pressure valve, they've got all the water that they want, but the higher elevations seem to be struggling. I, with councilman Christensen as well, dog went in, said they've got a different view on it. I think until we have a dog park, dogs on leash should be allowed, and instead of having to do it on enter, we should have little baggies. But a work session at some point in time with the police and council, I think is warranted. Oh, and then last thing, I went up to Forbay with Kerry Ferris, he's been working with the Friends of Forbay group. There is a really easy, really cheap parking area that we could get in initially, that's like, comparatively speaking, it would be next to nothing, just right off the road, it would accommodate fifteen cars probably. That could be a first step in starting to utilize that area.
We talked about that this morning, on our economic.
Yeah, that's good.
You were there.
I'll take you to it. Oh, I'll take you. It's fairly for me.
And Kerry is willing, I had a chance to talk with him on the phone, he is willing to take any of you, you know, individually, as a group, up to the Forbay and give you a tour of area and some of the ideas that, that they have.
I thought, I thought it was part of that, they were going to call me and they never got, that's why I said I missed the invite, I mean.
They probably don't have my number. I actually make that happen. So not a cruel warning. Anyway, I wanted to thank the mayor, because you are everywhere, doing everything, and I really appreciate that. You are so involved. I love the kilt, especially with the boots and the hat. And I know you've put in a lot of hours, so I want you to know, I really do appreciate that. Scott, your barbecue was awesome. Had to cook a steak that I really don't think I've ever cooked a steak on barbecue before. I know, I'm terrible. My husband does it, he doesn't either. We go eat at my kids' house when they do it. I'm just wondering, staff, so I heard that we're a little short in different places, and if we are, I would like to know. I don't want people struggling themselves, trying to get stuff done, because they're trying to do the work for free, instead of, you know, if we need to get some part-time people out there, we got to figure that out. And I also want to thank the people that are on all the committees that serve for the, for Payson City. It's, I wish they were here, I wish they were all here so we could thank them, because they put in their time for free. They go, they go on their little trips and, and figure things out, and we are not there to see what they do, but they put in a lot of time. So I would like to thank them. And staff, thank you for all your long, long hours, because I know they're, I'm in here enough, I see what you guys are doing, so thank you.
Well, Brian sits down so he can give his report, I got one more thing I want to add. I, my, my kids have been going down to Storytime in the library, and I know she doesn't get the accolades that she really deserves, but the little projects that they've brought home on space and moon landing and everything, I've loved it, my kids have loved it, my wife's enjoyed it. She, the only thing she ever struggled with was the, the recording of her, of her reading time. She's, "Oh, so cumbersome, I didn't like doing it," but she read all the time with the kids and stuff, so didn't get it recorded. So I don't know if there's a simpler way that doesn't give as much data. I know the data is crucial to you, but I know she was leaving it out, so I don't know who else was, but they loved it, really did, they had a good time, and they could bring home moons and suns painted on plates, and just have luck, but, thank you.
Can I use that as a segue? Sorry, I'm late, you can. I just want to make sure you can all be oriented to our next Friends and Family Night, which is, I'm honest with you, I failed and did not get the implications out for our last one. This is also the same night as the night out, which, we should have coordinated that better with the police department. But I think it'll work perfect, because we're cold enough, the street, and we are going to have a dunk tape that the mayor has said he would be happy to be in.
It's kind of a modified dunk.
It's a very modified, you're sitting in a chair, and when they hit the thing.
Do they have to pay? We might be able to make up any city debts that we owe.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, if you guys will volunteer, let us know, we would love for you to all take a shift. And if I get enough people, then I don't have to take a shift, so please, volunteer.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm not giving that to my wife.
Thank you, thank you, sorry about that, that worked out really nice, so thanks for the segue.
Great, thank you.
You want anything, Ron?
I'm just happy to be here, and I was hoping the agenda would be almost over, but no such luck.
We're up top. Yeah. He has, he has lots to talk about. That is disgusting.
Okay, I guess we'll, we'll go ahead and move on to action items. The action items, a request to amend the housing product in Springside Meadows subdivision flats I and J. Jill?
Yes, and mayor and city council, this probably won't take very long, but we do have some guests in the audience. So we do have D.R. Horton that is requesting modifications to the housing product for the townhome neighborhood. And so as we move forward with getting the development agreement to you, we thought it would be a good time to come to the city council, show you what the product is, give a thumbs up, or make any modifications necessary, so when we take the develop, bring the development agreement to you at the next meeting, there shouldn't be any hangups. And so we do appreciate, we do have Curtis Levitt and Jayden Ming and Steve Mann here with, with D.R. Horton. And so, you know, a couple of them are probably going to see you tonight with any questions that you have. But I just want to go through real quick with what the changes are to this point. So we are looking at the, maybe? So the area over the land, there's only one townhome neighborhood in Springside Meadows, and this product is very familiar to all of you. But anyway, it's class I and J that's located in the center of the development at J Street, or just immediately south of Spring Lake Elementary School. So that's the area that we're looking at. This is just a closer view of showing, you know, where the units will be, how the walkways are situated, landscaping amenities, different things that are proposed in that, in that neighborhood. The advocates are looking at buying this neighborhood from Springside Meadows. The only thing that they're requesting to change is the housing product. And so the number of units, the layout, the walkways, all of that is consistent with the, with the preliminary sound check approval that was contracted by the city council a month or so ago. So this was the interim product that Salisbury brought in. So he was required to bring in, you know, elevations of what the front load and the rear load product would be. And these are the elevations that, so this, this is the same building here, so, you know, the top, the top picture shows, you know, the elevation is, this would actually be the unit that would be adjacent to 1800 South, and then its rear load into the interior roads there. So this is, this is what was approved for the, for Salisbury. And then this is the front elevation for the front load product, you know, just showing the grudges, you know, the materials, just these there. So D.R. Horton is bringing in a request, so they prepared this, this layout here, just showing this other color code of it, to what will be product A, B, and C. And so it just shows that, you know, the legend there on the right, showing the different products, and then we'll go through that really briefly. It is, north is to your left, and so to the left is 1800 South Street, and then the Spring Lake Elementary School. So that's where it orients you, so north is not up, which typically is the shift inside, just so they can show, have a better layout for the presentation. So product A, so I'm just going to go, so I've got it down in the corner there, so you can see where product A can be located, where those buildings would be. So this is front load product, and so these would be front loads, maybe access interior to the development, for the new roads in the development. So there are two floor plans that they're proposing, they're, they're going to do two more, that is proposed in those locations there. That is proposed in those locations there. This is all provided in your packet, also on the right hand side it shows the mixture of materials that is provided, so they do have a really good mix of materials. They had an opportunity with staff when they first initiated this, this process and, you know, there's a few things that we said, you know, can you modify this or enhance this entryway and they were very great, great to work with and make those changes, so we do appreciate their willingness to do that and also their professional recommendations. You know, they do have, you know, an architect that's on staff that's willing to look at if this will work and this won't work, you know, from different perspectives. Here's another elevation show, showing how that would appear on the streetscape with landscaping, the finished product. So they still have a lot of popouts and windows and roof lining variations, so they've incorporated a lot of the architectural features that we like in these, in the project. The next one is product B, so that would be located in the interior of the development, next to the park area, as well as on the south side of the hill a little bit. This shows you here what the front and rear will look like. So the top elevation is what you will see from the park area. So you won't see garage doors, it'll be very tractable, it portrays, it'll create that interaction between the residents and those utilizing the space there. Another view of that. And product C, this is what is located, so down the left or the right hand corner, these buildings will be built immediately adjacent to 1800 South, so that is this new street on the north. So the, the grudges will be interior to the development and the porches and the front yard areas will be adjacent to 1800 South and that quarter leading to the elementary school. And there's another as well. Porches was definitely something that the council wanted to see with the Salisbury product and as you can see, I think they did a great job with incorporating those porches into that. So as far as recommendation and decision, they did go to the planning commission because it was an amendment to the original approval. Planning commission reviewed it and they recommended approval to the city council with some staff conditions, the staff suggestions that were included in there, especially wrapping some architectural features on the side of the corner side elevations of the units. So the motion tonight of the city council is to address the housing product, exterior materials and the design features, some variation from Salisbury to D.R. Horton product. You can approve, approve or amend and approve. Staff is suggesting that we incorporate those architectural features on the corner side of the units. We do recognize that some of the other sidewalls of the units aren't going to be as visible to the public, so our concentration is on the core, on the corner side. And then the findings would be that the housing product and design materials are consistent with and/or enhance the previous elevations that were approved for this project. And then also going back to the specific plan for the annexation area, that they are providing the housing, the variety of housing product in the annexation, like in 2003, I don't know how long we're going back. Anyway, so, so anyway, I think, you know, the applicants have been willing to, to address the concern, the staff had a great conversation with the planning commission at the meeting and had a great dialogue there and they were willing to consider two things and staff would just suggest that you follow the planning commission's guidance and move forward with the recommendation of approval or a decision of approval. So as I mentioned, we do have representatives of D.R. Horton here. I'm not sure if they have any, if they want to add to that, but they are definitely here to answer any questions you have in their efforts to receive approval tonight.
Yeah, just looking at that, I think that those are, the aesthetics of those homes are very pleasing to me. I think they look wonderful as far as my opinion is concerned and I like the fact that the riders are on the back and that this is the pleasing sight you see when you look at, at the homes. So I think that's a, a great mix as far as my two cents are concerned.
I have a couple of questions for you. One of, that one right there, you have color, is that planned to have color or is that just concept?
Hi, my name is Jayden Ming with D.R. Horton. We actually do color some of our homes, it won't be quite that red, it's on the screen, but we do have a few different color schemes that we could add when going through that time.
The reason I ask, because if you see apartments across the way on the interstate with the color, I, I like that because it just brings a variety and difference and makes it look different. You go down past Ridstone, there's some townhomes are building down there, they're just, to me, just blah, blocks and so there's a big difference between those and the apartments and so if you could look at those two and just kind of see the difference and see.
We actually have five color schemes that we work with, you know, blue, I could wear a couple of different grays, a light gray, a dark gray, a red, and then a green. And it's, yeah, we like to do that just to get that a little.
Like the cover.
So anyway, I just encourage you to look at the ones down by Ridstone and try not to do that because they're just basically blocks to me.
That's good character.
And, but the apartments I kind of like, so.
Any further discussion? Okay, nice. Ready for a motion?
I can make a motion, we approve the amendment to the housing products for the Springside Meadows subdivision flats I and J with findings.
I'll second that.
Okay, I don't believe this calls for roll call, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, ordinance amendments to Title IX Streets and sidewalks. Travis, you're ready?
Mayor and council, Jeremy with Hales Engineering is here, he's the one that kind of helped us go through this process of analyzing our ordinance that, I don't know, Ken could probably answer better than me, how long has it been since we've updated the street ordinance, but it's been a long time, so. He kind of helped us go through that process with our input and, you know, made some changes to it that obviously we'll talk about a little bit tonight, but I'll just, without me talking, I'll let Jeremy do it.
Hi, mayor and council, my name is Jeremy Searle, I'm with Hales Engineering. I've spent a lot of time to work with Travis and Ken and Jill and Nestor and everybody that's provided their input on this, you have a great staff here. I know updating some codes is really exciting, I know that's why all these good people shut up, so it's a lot of fun to do that, but what I'd like to do is just kind of give an overview of, I don't know if you have copy of your packets or anything, but I'll just kind of go through it, you don't have to read along if you don't want, but as Travis mentioned, the code hasn't been updated, I think, over sixty years and so it's, it's been a long time and code has, has come away since then and so there are a lot of things that we want to do just to update it and make sure that it's current and works well for the city. So if we start in section nine point one, this whole section was added to make it more consistent with the rest of the city code. So it talks about the title, the authority, where the authority of the city code comes from, what the purpose and the intent is, that kind of things. It also outlines the documents that it's supposed to be consistent with, such as your zoning and subdivision ordinances, the general plan, transportation master plan, and so on. It also outlines the city responsibilities and the process for making amendments in the future. All that was, was new, it wasn't included in the old code. The next section's on sidewalks. A lot of this is similar to what was there in the past. We still have to get approval with the public works director to do these, we need permits to do that. One thing that I guess is important to note, we did update the section on inspection cost. The old one had, I don't remember the exact words, but like a dollar to do inspections and fifty cents or something else and, we, it was old, right? And so now it says refer to the city fee schedule, which is consistent with what we gave them, so that's, that's a good update. Next section's on streets. It references that we need to be consistent with the roadway design standards that have been developed by Pace and City, as well as APWA standards. Again, it has to get authorization through the public works director, you need permits and bonds to do street work, we kind of outline how that works. A lot of that's consistent with how it was before. One thing that we did, sorry, go ahead.
I've got a question.
Yes.
That's probably not ordinance specific, but nine point three point two says defects should be reported and repaired, so all employees should be doing this. Do we have a system that we can do this, where we can pull up like a map and, or can we get one where, where we can see what's been reported so Ken's not getting the same reports ten times over and, because are you getting reports from your employee, from the city employees? I know I sent you one the other day, but.
We, we do and we're currently working into an I-Works program.
Okay.
That you'll be able to, it'll be somewhat interactive.
Okay. Yeah, so it wasn't.
Good, no, it's good.
Specific to the, the ordinance, but I, but if we have that in there, I'd like to see that we have a way to actually report that, follow through.
Perfect, yeah, let me know if you have a question, I'd have to work, I've never answered. Okay. One thing that we did add that I do think is important and I know Ken wanted this as well, is we have a no cut policy on new pavement. Or there wasn't anything in the ordinance to say when we put down new pavement, if someone came in, you know, a month later to that, I mean, put a water line or whatever, we cut up, spread the pavement. So now this prohibits that for, for one year, or excuse me, it has a one-year warranty and then a five-year no-cut policy on new pavements. So I think that's very beneficial, we're not putting a new pavement, turn it out right after, so.
How do you, how do you do that if somebody built it in an area that hasn't been, is still, is that an exception to the rule or?
Generally, go ahead.
Sorry.
Generally, if we do a, a major project, we'll study lots, bake lots of paint like that, so it's not an issue. Like six days east and four north, most of those homes were already cut. There was a couple with the flat changed, they already had it cut and for the most part we tried to notify and for a complete loss.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Going to section nine point four, this part is also new. It talks about having transportation master plan, I know that the city is currently in the process of updating, which is great, and it's, it's consistent with that. Also references access management guidelines, which are found in the Pace and Development guidelines that are put together, and then, as well as traffic calming guidelines. And this is something that we worked together with city staff, we met with the police chief, fire chief to talk about traffic calming and where and where it actually implemented and a process for doing that. And so that's something that we put together and had a draft for and I'm guessing you will see that in the future, that, correct? That'll come to city, city council, so, so you'll see a copy of that as well. And then also to, to follow the M E T C D for signal and street standards. So that's a quick overview of the code, again, I know it's super exciting, but are there any questions? Is there something I can?
Yeah, they're great time reading that as well. I do have some questions, there's quite a bit that's cut out. Is that addressed or is it just stuff that was in there that we didn't name or?
There's a lot of stuff that's not really relevant anymore, there's a big section on railroad, how to monitor, that's not really how it works anymore. And so a lot of it's just not relevant, and so that's, it's kind of.
And is this, trying to read through it and understand it, is this just for changes after, it's not for new subdivisions, new roads, or it, or does it cover all that too?
Sorry, is there any question?
Well, is this for new subdivision, new roads, or is it just for?
So, so design standards are from the Pace and City design guidelines, so when they build a new road, they'll refer to those and how to build them.
Right, so that, that really doesn't cover, this is not covered.
In reference, it's, it's, it needs to be.
Right, okay. So mostly it's just if you go and tear up a road or maybe add a sidewalk or something like that, that's what this is covering, okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Would that be the reason that street naming and building addresses and stuff was excluded?
No, it was actually cut because it's found in at least two other places in the city code.
Because I was looking at that, I like, I like the numbered streets and to see it being scratched out, it's like to encourage.
Yeah, some of the ordinance and, and then on other places. And to have it multiple places is not great because one changes or they're not consistent with each other, so that was one.
Any further council discussion? Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion. To make a motion that we approve ordinance seven seventeen nineteen, many various sections to Title IX Streets and sidewalks. Okay, a motion to the mayor and seconded, roll call votes, sorry, with council and Christensen.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, go on to resolution number three, repeal resolution zero nine zero seven ninety four regarding Pace and City's policy with respect to encouraging and assisting residential property owners to install curb gutter and sidewalks within the city's streets right of way. Ken?
Mayor and council, going through Title IX and remapping all of that title, this resolution, coming to the surface and there was a lot of discussion. So we thought it'd be important to the council to get a resolution, it's a twenty-four-year-old son of a father who has a new life, for a minimum of years, then, I don't know, it's basically done. It still represents these deterioration, things like that. So we're here to like to show you the position of council and possibly, we're not trying to kill a program, we're just trying to repeal a law that. If council chose to remap the program, you could, you could repeal this, or this resolution, or if we had let, you know, that's what I'm.
Okay, council discussion?
I don't have a problem repealing that because we aren't refusing that, but I think that we need to really look at, because it's been talked about a lot here, is what we can do with our curb gutter and sidewalks, I think we need to have something in place, but obviously this is not it, so.
I agree, we need, we need a program, we just need more time to go and see what takes, have more days to go.
So could we, could we go ahead and approve this and then ask staff to get together and to present a new program for us?
Yeah, that would be great. There's been a lot of discussion, we're just talking with Travis and Jill, there's a lot of good ideas, it's just, you know, they're trying to match the limits. Curb gutter, it's on the bottom there, so I just told it off.
It's interesting, I had a discussion today about somebody who used this, which was unsolicited, I was meeting with the Weeblos and, and they were talking about curb gutter and sidewalk and somebody had used this, but they, there were concerns. I agree with council and Jill that we need to get something, a program in place sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Especially in our modernized city, I mean, previous council and mayor talked about talking about it for eight years and we're still talking about it, so we need to get something in place, but yeah.
My, my parents used this program and it worked very well at the time and as you say, it includes deep ditch, which was on the side of our, our home at the time, so I believe that it's time to maybe take, have you know, take this resolution away and then develop a new one.
And in that, I don't know if we did this, can we require, like when somebody sells their house and it isn't curb and gutter, that they have to bring it up?
I don't think so. I've pressed that too.
Yeah, the sale of private property that would trigger anything, it's like, if they come in for a permit, depending on what, what they're requesting, it may trigger the request, our request to have that brought up to speed. I haven't seen the program used, I think, one time it was used since I've been here, but I've seen people that have come away from improving or developing because of the costs of that, curb gutter, sidewalk, and those type of things, so it cuts both. It cuts both ways. Even with participation, it...
I'm hearing that extension and put that stuff in.
So why didn't Spanish work then?
They historically, they just went out.
So basically, we're going to pay for it?
I think that's what the special improvement district thing was on a couple of weeks ago, whatever it was.
Exactly.
And that's a little bit different story. If they put it in, they can leave the property. I want it to sell them that it is paid for at that point in time, but I have some new installs, we can't force them to do it when they sell it. My only concern is I hate to take something away and leave a void.
Can't have a replacement?
Without a replacement, is it so, would it be horrible to leave it for a couple of weeks while we do something to replace it?
An option is to leave it and ask staff to see if it can be revamped and bring something back.
I would like to have something in place and not just sit on forever.
I like the idea of helping to replace the hundred and twenty-five one-year feet or whatever, but I don't understand why it's a set size. I look at some lots that are, they're big lots, and I mean, I'd like to see it still used and maybe publicized a little bit better, but updated to be more with what it needs, but maybe I'm crazy. We discussed that a couple of times today too, but I don't know.
One of the considerations is this has usually gone unfunded in the budget. It's a policy out there, but...
There's no funding for it.
If there's no funding for it, that doesn't work. We need to incorporate funding for this as a kind of a continual fund.
And revamping the policy or...
Policy, there's a set amount that we could do, percentage or something.
So either you funded it on paper or you replace it and...
I don't know. Talking about deep ditch irrigation, it probably needs to be revamped. It is outdated, and now it's our curb gutter sidewalks, all the specs have changed on it and things like that.
I don't think if we do away with it, we're losing anything, because it's not something that we're using right now, so it's not necessarily a void. It's just avoid already.
I guess we could put, we want another one, sorry, staff, that we would like something within the next two months or something, so that it's not just...
Obviously, we would put that kind of contract in.
How much do you need?
Maybe let's look at, we don't think so.
That's fine, yeah, because we are really busy right now.
That's a fair question.
I just worry without a timeframe, that who knows when we'll ever get to it, because we're always busy. But I understand what you're saying, so if it's longer than two months, I'm okay, but no timeframe, it'll get very like this.
I think the policy would be easier, right, is the funding.
Right, well, and that depends on our side, like we have to decide what we're willing, comfortable to fund.
It'd be easier to write this.
Right. So a lot of it actually comes back to us.
When is the next government body to redo the budget? What's that, years? Is it...
It seems like we're always doing, oh, we do the truth and taxation, and I know it's
coming up, and that's where my...
That's council meeting, yeah.
The truth and taxation.
The city manager usually likes to start, he says March, but it's usually December.
Jill, did you have a comment you'd like to add?
I was going to make a comment, you never know when somebody's going to come in and request, so maybe keep it in...
Well, it's on the record now, so if anybody's following the record, it doesn't have a sidewalk, it brought to their attention again.
Okay, so if we want to just keep it in place, if we want to keep it in place, we just, how do we do that?
Yeah, you don't have the resolution because the resolution...
We don't have money for it, we got to redo it.
Remand it back to staff or to present an amended or a new policy by the date of...
Okay, I think we're to the point where we can, I'll ask for a motion. Is there a motion out there? We'll support this.
Make a motion that we repeal the resolution of nine seven ninety-four for the policy for installing curb gutter and sidewalk within the city right of way, with remanding back to staff to come up with a new ordinance resolution by the end of the, no, not physical, end of the year, not physical, in June, the end of the year, and working with council and staff on how to fund that.
So a second? Second? Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded, ready for a roll call vote, starting with council on the high.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
You have to give us a reason why. I don't know, I just have this conversation now, though.
I know, it's past conversation, but I just, I felt that I hated to see it as the left is an opening.
But it's not...
Somebody four days ago that says, I really want to add on to my property, and he's going to, he has to do like nine hundred linear feet of curb and gutter, and so to eliminate that, that was...
The kicker there is not funded, so we couldn't...
The kicker is it's not funded, but just could have, you know, waited until...
Okay, well, that one, number four.
Okay.
Number four, resolution, social media policies. Dave?
Mayor, council, we've been working with our consultant on this. We've reviewed, we've made some changes, but we're bringing it forward to get a social media policy created and start working with that. You know, if we find that things need to be tweaked, we can. I know we sent out to you guys a few weeks ago or a month ago, and I had a comment, but we have had a review by different staff members, we did make some changes, but we're just asking that you adopt a social media policy, and we're going to do our best to be better at social media.
As I understand it, if we adopt this, we can modify it as we see the need.
Oh, yeah. This will be our policy, and if we need to amend the policy, we'll do that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I liked having an outline of the policy, but my biggest concern still is how we follow through with this, make sure we use it and not just have something on paper, but we have to support the staff, the money to really use it, because it's sitting there, and it's easy to have it sitting there, but it doesn't do us any good if we don't do something with it.
The only way to ensure that, I would hope, is to have somebody full-time to build the social media, having the challenges we've had, we've talked about hiring and calling interns or doing some things that to try to help this. I know Dave and the associate, we pay them for a certain amount of help, but that will probably go away. We do need to, we do need to have somebody focus on it.
I know it's a problem.
Yeah.
I think the bigger thing with this, though, that's good about the policy, is it talks about what the language should sound like when somebody does books, and I think that's important, how they react in their conversations, you know, because people get pretty brave and bold when they're online, and they're behind a screen, and they say things, and then a person on our side might get frustrated, and I just think it's important to have that language there as an accountability tool for you and department heads, you know, in case somebody crosses the line a little bit. But there's that second piece there that we need to do it, but we have a few people using really well, but it is hard to keep up with everything.
I think we ought to hire them.
We're doing better than we've done before, but we have a lot to do with it.
Okay, guess we're ready for a motion. Anybody want to venture?
All right, we make a motion, we pass the social media policy.
Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded. We'll go roll call vote, starting with council. Moon Chris Thompson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
So really, you could find somebody to do that?
Okay, going on to number five, another resolution, real estate purchase contract for sewer line installment.
So, sorry, I wanted to check something up there, I didn't get ready. While this is pulling up, Mayor, council, when we did the last budget amendment, added some money to the sewer project, because they need to place an easement on property along there at the nine hundred north, it's Bar T, it's Dr. Taylor's property along there. We have had a sewer line in there for many years, but we haven't had a formal easement. And so we've negotiated to work with them, and then last week she asked me if we would simply have, if we'd be willing to purchase this other property, and we mentioned, oh, there it is, let's see if I can walk that out. So this is the area, it's nine hundred north, and David Lundar, surveyor, got this prepared, that's what I... So she approached, what we talked to her about is we need this area up through here, and even up there, and then we were going to purchase this as well.
Is that the bowling alley, just for reference?
Bowling alley, by the way. Well, this is the UDOT Park and Ride. So we worked out and agreed to the cost, everything on this, and that's part of the budget that we came up with, the budget limit. She approached last week and wondered if we'd be willing to buy this park as well. She, it's a trust property, both the parents are passed away, and she said, I just really want to get out of the trust here. And so we talked about it with staff, and this may be something that we can utilize in the future. When they realign the interchange, there will be a road coming out of here. And then our electrical department said there's some pretty big holes right here that are going to have to be relocated, and so this property could be, you know, valuable to us. And so I sent a text to her asking if she would sell it for an additional price. I haven't heard from her, but I prepared a real estate purchase contract for tonight because this sewer project's ready to go, and we need to get this in place. So if they want more money than we offer, we really don't need this, but we felt like if we can come to terms, that'd be a good piece of property. There's a little triangle piece right here, too, that's part of her trust, and I threw that in as well, because I don't know if they would be able to do anything with that either.
For people to all go out all the time?
Yeah. And so that's where we're at. I wish I would have heard from her before meeting, but you know, also, UDOT may relocate this Park and Ride when the interchange is realigned. We don't know if they would work with the city on another location, but this property could be developed or could be used for our utilities or other things like that, so I put in, I put all the parcels in the real estate purchase bunch back on there. I put a little more than what we had offered, just so we would have to come back to the council. I think we will, but that's where we're at, if the council is willing to purchase these properties.
Can we put a dog park there? I'm looking at a couple places for a dog park. It's the other thing I get asked about, where anything else is going for.
We are working on that.
Yeah, so you're where I tried, I know, we're in to talk to a Spanish work consultant, their parks and talk to their account control officer. I think it's something we can do with some of the property we already have.
So Dave, for that parcel, the point seven eight acres, how much are we offering just for that?
Well, the county market value on there is forty-six on this parcel, and this one over here is ten, and I just asked that she would sell both of those for thirty-five. I don't think, I think that's fair. We've offered on this, we came to terms, this property's a little hard for anybody to own except for the city, but I really didn't want to start fighting hard negotiations because they've allowed us to put that sorrel in for all these years at no cost, but I really didn't want to barter too much, so I threw that out and had her, she probably needs to talk to the rest of her family, so that's what I offered.
So if we pass this resolution, we're not obligated, you're just giving you the ability to do that?
I would add the motion, if you wanted to approve this real estate purchase contract with flexibility of the manager, can get negotiated with them, up to the, up to the point, up to the amount in the real estate purchase contract.
Any discussion other than what we already have?
So I don't know the overlay for UDOT, but is this parcel going to be part of what they need, that they're going to ask for, just to give it to them or...
This, no. We overlaid it with our staff meeting, and there is a road that comes from the interchange right into this area, but this will all remain the same, I believe, under the UDOT proposal. They are taking some of the, they're taking probably all of the veteran facilities, and they've been negotiating with the Browns, on the Brown Barn over there. But this part, I don't think is part of the real line.
So you think the point seven eight acres is big enough to do something on, if we sold it, that somebody'd be able to put it...
It's a veteran yearning facility, not a...
Not a veteran.
We knew it. You guys know that. It possibly could, but we thought also with UDOT, with the change, you know, if we had, you know, maybe use this and this, it could be something that could be utilized.
I just get a piece that never get there, can't be utilized.
Well, but like our electrician said, we probably need to utilize that for some of the removal of big power poles. And Kent mentioned something about possible storm drain, and I jumped on that, I said, good, I'll take that out of your budget. And so there are some, there are some uses that we could use it, but...
Okay, guess we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we, the purchase real estate contract for the sewer line installment is up to the amount that was on there, given the latitude to the staff to negotiate up to that amount.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with council on the high.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Counsel, I would like, if I could, go back to the, what is it, public forum, I see Steve, I know you emailed me or texted me something you'd like to do, if that's okay, we can go back to the public forum, we just remit?
Do we need to make a motion or...
Do we need, can I just open it? Okay, come on up, Steve, if you would.
Steve is the mastermind behind the girls behind.
We talked about doing one around the pickleball court, everybody said that they were going to do it around outside of that.
I don't know.
The pickleball courts have a short rotating wall down there, and I just think it'd be a good place for kids to repeat, I'd rather see a mural put on there. And it's the right height, the junior high kids could do it.
It might be covered up, so that won't happen, but look.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I had gotten some control air plan done here by the time we got through into the public forum. I just wanted to express my thanks to the council, city, to the park commissioner, Carl, I guess he was here, presumably was, they had been so helpful in helping us with that grant in order to put that mural in there. Too happy across this, it's been a very difficult, Brian, his help, it's, I just wanted to express my thanks for the work, credit him when he supplied the supplies, carefully doing all of that, and...
Yeah, thanks for all your efforts. You put a lot of time and effort in this, especially when you had with your wife and her health problems to solve.
Yes, thank you very much, Steve. Okay, that brings us to the point where we'd like to adjourn to a closed session.
Although that really deserves a closed session, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second it, roll call vote, starting with council, Moon Chris Thompson.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you.